Good evening, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the County of Sacramento.
Recording has started.
Oh, it was just interrupted there. Go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. That is the canned voice in blue jeans that lets us know that the recording has began.
Perfect. Well, bear with me this evening. It's my first meeting as Chair. We're going to go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for the County of Sacramento for December 6, 2021. You go ahead and call the roll, please.
Absolutely. Members Borha?
Present, thank you.
Martinson?
Here.
Tati Chi?
Here.
Wong?
Here.
And Chairperson Rachel?
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Perfect. Do you want to go ahead and kick us off with the opening statement?
Absolutely. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is live streamed and closed to in-person public participation. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. When the Chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Please feel free to send your email comment to boardclerk@statecounty.net, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
Thank you, Lydia. And did you want to go ahead and introduce the first item?
Item number one, PLNP 2020-00233 is a workshop on Sacramento County Active Transportation Plan. It is County One, and the environmental document is that it's not applicable.
Hello, I'm Nikki McDaniel. Can you all hear me?
Yes, Nikki, thank you.
All right. I'm a senior planner at the Department of Transportation. I'm presenting on the Draft Active Transportation Plan tonight. I am joined by Kevin Bucy, Principal Civil Engineer in the Department of Transportation, as well as Brett Hondorff, President of Alta Planning. Alta Planning is leading our consultant team along with Civic Thread, which is formerly Walk Sacramento. They are leading our public engagement, as well as DKS Associates, who is performing analysis. Getting off in spring 2020, we heard from community members across the county about ways that we can make walking and biking safer, easier, and more comfortable for people of all ages and abilities. Now, we want to share the draft ATP as a workshop item and to hear your thoughts on the draft infrastructure projects and program recommendation. Next slide, please. The Active Transportation Plan is a blueprint for how walkways and bikeways will build out in the unincorporated county into the future. We have four goals of the ATP. One, improve safety for everyone, especially people walking, biking, and rolling. Two, develop more connected bicycle and sidewalk networks. Three, increase access to parks, schools, and other community destinations. Four, make walking, biking, and rolling more comfortable. The plan lists priority infrastructure improvements, which DOT will be able to use in order to go after grant funding to then build out that infrastructure. Also, the plan helps the county to have some leverage with private applicants to ask them to build out these walking and biking facilities within their own applications. Tonight, we want to hear your thoughts on whether on, we want to hear your thoughts on the infrastructure as well as the programming recommendations. Next slide, please. In spring 2020, we kicked off the first phase of public engagement. We wanted to hear about people's current challenges and opportunities in walking and biking. We wanted to know where are people coming from, where are they going to, and what can we do to improve the trip for how people get to where they want to go? And we started this, we started public engagement off concurrent with the COVID-19 pandemic, which posed a challenge. Civic Thread did a great job in pivoting to virtual engagement. In the second phase, which is on the second part of the slide, the bright side of the slide, we took what we heard about people's challenges and opportunities in walking and biking. We rolled that into the analysis that was performed by Alta and DKS, and we formed infrastructure recommendations. We then went back out to the community with a second set of virtual community workshops, pop-up activities, and an interactive map where people could comment on where we were proposed, where we are proposing bike lanes, sidewalks, and that kind of infrastructure. We just finished Phase Three of outreach, which was asking the public to comment on the draft plan. The public comment period just ended on November 14th. Next slide, please. We built upon the stakeholder meetings, which were held early in Phase One, and we partnered with a number of community-based organizations to organize these pop-ups. The pop-ups focused on a particular area of the county or a particular demographic. So, for example, on December 3, 2020, we co-hosted a meeting with AARP and focused on older adults. We used this, we used this strategy to leverage the pre-existing relationships that the community-based organizations already had, and we were able to reach out all the way into people's living rooms. Next slide, please. The result of public engagement and analysis was forming infrastructure recommendations. Here, we're looking at priority sidewalk gaps. This is just a subset of the gaps. There are 192 miles of sidewalk gaps that need to be filled in in the unincorporated county. For a full listing of all of these gaps, you can look in the plan for the priority ones, and then for the full listing, you can look at the appendices. Next slide, please. We identified 194 priority intersections. And these are intersections where we think if we add a pedestrian enhancement, such as a curb extension or bulbout, or change the signalization, like add a leading pedestrian interval, we can make these intersections better for pedestrians in order to cross the street. The full tables and maps, again, are in the appendices. Next slide, please. Here, I am showing examples of intersection and sidewalk improvements. I think we're all familiar with sidewalks and crosswalks, so I'm going to skip to rectangular rapid flashing beacon and pedestrian hybrid beacon up in the upper right. These are types of active warning beacons, which use an irregular flash pattern to indicate to drivers that pedestrians and cyclists have the right-of-way to cross the street. And then we also have curb extensions, leading pedestrian interval to allow a pedestrian to get out into the crosswalk before the light changes for drivers. Median refuge island, slip lane removal, which, if you're not familiar with that, a slip lane is, allows a driver to take a free right and to do so without slowing down very much, and that leaves pedestrians exposed to higher traffic at higher speeds. So if we fill in these slip lanes, we can reduce the speed of traffic turning right and also free up more space for street furniture or a wider sidewalk. And then we also have no right on red, which we're hoping to reduce right-hook collisions by restricting, by restricting drivers to turn right on red. Next slide, please. This is a table and map of priority bike projects. Again, the full listing of all of the projects are in the plan and in the appendices. We are recommending over 1,200 miles of bikeways. Next slide, please. Here, we're looking at visual examples of bicycle projects. A shared-use path, a Class One, is similar to the trail in the American River Parkway or the Sacramento Northern Trail. A bike lane is an in-road facility. Buffered bike lane is a bike lane with 18 inches to three feet of striping that separates the cyclist in the bike lane from traffic that is adjacent. Bicycle Boulevard, this is taking low-volume, like low-traffic-volume streets, and then using signage and other means to give cyclists priority. And then we have the newest bikeway, which is a protected bike lane or a cycle track, a Class Four, which is a bike lane that's protected either with curbing diverters, stand-up diverters, like posts. It can be planters. It could even be a parking lane that separates the cyclists from traffic. Next slide, please. The plan doesn't stop at infrastructure. We are also proposing a series of programs to support walking and biking. Under number one, education programs, bike education, we want to teach people to ride safely. We also want to have driver awareness programs. This is a big priority for our SACBAC, the Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee. They want to see programs like the advertising campaign that Caltrans launched for. You may have seen the billboards while driving down the freeway. It's a picture of a construction worker and a kid, and the message is, "Slow down. My dad works here." Number two, encouragement programs. The plan proposes social walking and biking walking groups. Next slide, please. We recommended infrastructure support programs. Classes such as Bike Maintenance and Repair, Bike Match Program, SABA, the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates, has this kind of program where they take donated bicycles and match them with an essential worker, giving that bike to that person for free. Bike maps and safety information, including wayfinding signage. Next slide, please. The fourth category of programming recommendations is safe routes to school programs, which include walking school buses and bike trains, as well as safe passage and corner graters. Next slide, please. We have support programs. These are more infrastructure support programs, such as bike rack installation, bike share and micro-mobility, and slow streets and school streets. Next slide, please. This is the project schedule. Right now, we are in Stage Four. We are reviewing the draft plan. And we are also, at the same time, starting off the environmental document, which is in Stage Five. So, the SACBAC has reviewed the draft plan on November 3rd. They asked about outreach to non-English-speaking communities. They wanted to see that we had a commitment, that DOT has a commitment to maintenance, specifically sweeping the bicycle lanes. They expressed concern about the designation of study corridors, which are segments of streets that will be studied for Class Four cycle track feasibility, but doesn't commit to implementing them. It just, we need to study it first and then go forward with implementation. They were also concerned about parallel cuts in the bicycle lane due to development activity, and they asked that the plan show a commitment to restoring bike lanes to their former condition after development activity. And lastly, the SACBAC wanted to see an emphasis in programs on driver awareness and micro-mobility. The input from the commission that we've received tonight will be forwarded to Alta in order to make changes to the plan and will also be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors on February 15th. Our Caltrans grant deadline is February 28th, and as I mentioned earlier, the environmental document is underway now. Planning and environmental review is seeking an initial study mitigated negative declaration. Public circulation of the document is expected in March, and the final document should be ready in June. The draft plan will go as a, for final approval by this commission in August 2022, and then will go before the Board of Supervisors in October 2022. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
This is Cara. I have one. Thank you for your presentation. A lot of good work put into this plan. I'm just curious, and this, it might not get down, I didn't see it kind of, excuse me, get down into this level of detail, but wondering if this came up kind of through the public outreach project. As you know, the unincorporated area in Sac County is highly urbanized, but there's also, I think, a strong kind of community connection to that feeling of unincorporated. But obviously sidewalks and connectivity and pedestrian safety are extremely important. Is there thoughts or was there discussion about how to kind of preserve that quote-unquote rural still nature without the sidewalks, but while, but including them, but maybe in sort of a more, I guess it's more of a design function than anything else, but just curious if that discussion took place or if that came up kind of during that outreach process?
Hmm, so outside of the ATP process, I have definitely heard from residents in like the Carmichael Fair Oaks area about, with concern about adding sidewalks in order to preserve community character. But within the last year and a half, I would say that I haven't, I haven't seen a lot of comments that speak to that particular concern. So it's more, what I've heard much more of is we want to see parity between pedestrians and cyclists, and we want to see more sidewalks. So I didn't, I didn't hear a lot of that particular comment, to be honest.
Okay, that's interesting. I would just, it does come up sort of more on a project-by-project basis when we, you know, hear from folks and, you know, review proposals, but just curious if that doesn't sound like it kind of came up in this context.
It didn't. And we did manage to have a pop-up with the Delta community, which was very difficult. And there, the, there were only three people, I believe, who were able to make it to that one, but their concerns were more like, how do we make it to the nearest major destination within our community, rather than like, how do we preserve like the rural nature of this area? Because, you know, not a whole lot, not a whole lot of facilities were proposed for that area. So it's more like, we want to be able to cross the street and walk along a street safely, because there are very high speeds down there.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have, does anybody else have any questions?
Hi, this is Commissioner Borha. Thank you so much for your presentation and for your hard work on the outreach and for including SABA, Walk Sacramento, and all the other stakeholders. Just curious to see how does ATP would basically discuss the county's priorities of actually delivering projects that would be fiscally constrained? So not a wish list, but an actual project list to which the county is going to be dedicating transportation dollars. How are you all going to prioritize which corridors would have sidewalks or bike lanes first? Would that be based on the number of accidents, the number of angel or ghost bikes that are tied on those corners? Or would it be which, you know, which supervisory district may or may not have a matching, like, fund for it? Just curious to see how you guys would prioritize which projects would be delivered first.
Okay, so that's a good question. So we have a prioritization metric. The methodology is listed in the plan. And then, so what we did was we looked at the community, the connections between destinations, and we took all of the recommendations and we scored them based on the metrics. So it included, is this located on a high-injury network? So you'll see in the plan that we have a high-injury network for bicycles and for pedestrians. And so these are areas where we have seen a lot of collisions. And so, you know, the presence of a recommendation on one of those, on one of those corridors means that we would be hitting the streets that have had the most prior collisions. So that's one way we address that concern. And we have, one of the metrics is equity. And so if the, if a project was in an environmental justice community, then it received a higher score. And then we also have, under feasibility, there was, if a particular recommendation received a comment from someone during the ATP process, in a positive way, then we, it got some points for feasibility, as in it's receiving community support. So all of the recommendations were scored, and they were also given a project estimate. And so what Alta did then is to take those recommendations to pull out what they consider to be the priority network. And that's what you see in the plan. It's like a subset of all of the recommendations, just letting us as the county know what makes sense to go after first. And then all of the recommendations are then listed in ranked order in the appendices. And so what we will be doing is, at DOT, is trying to go after grant funding using this list in, well, we're looking at it in order. However, we are, we have to look at the Venn diagram, like the center of the Venn diagram between what the statutory priorities of individual grant programs are and what we have on our list. So we won't necessarily go directly one down the list, but we will try our best to go for the projects that are ranked most highly by our by our metrics, which was our community scoring, and then find what funders will go for. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I did have one small kind of follow-up, and thank you for that. I appreciate the Venn diagram and your list of priorities. And also thank you for having a lot of different pop-ups in different communities. You know, I saw that you guys had a pop-up that was with the Farm Bureau. You also had a pop-up with a Spanish-speaking community and with the Secog youth. So thank you for thinking outside of the box. My question too is, for new developments, would this ATP then require a certain complete streets metric for new and planned developments? Or would new developments then be just kind of subject to just what was agreed upon by the county? So we're going to be looking at potentially new suburban growth. I'd like to make sure that we are also incorporating complete streets in the design and also in the design manual for what is going to be paid for by those building fees.
So the plan gives the county leverage to be able to compel a developer to put what we have in the ATP into their plans. Now, with a larger area, like a specific plan, like the applicant can negotiate to have their own bikeway, their own bikeway plan, but we'll have significant leverage to be able to ask that what we have in the ATP is the minimum. So I think that we are starting from a much a much better basis, because we have, we already have an idea of what we want to see. And from there, we can ask for more.
Understood. Would that be incorporating interconnectivity and not necessarily just like a circular parkway? Then you just create a bike island. Like, I'm trying to see like, if, for example, if there's gaps in the system, would that incentive for the new developer then work with the county and try to connect, as opposed to saying, hey, we have 1.2 miles of walkway within, let's say, inside of our development, for example, but not necessarily connected, because it's, like I said, it's not connected?
So I think, okay, let me know if I am not understanding the question correctly, but I'll give an example. So there are two planned areas in the Jackson Corridor where it, you know, in talking to the developer, and this is from my time at a previous department, I think that as department staff, you encourage, you encourage the bikeway exhibits to meet up so that they're all connecting. And you have more say over the ones that are, that are going to allow people to enter and exit their particular planned area. But are you, are you asking whether, like whether developers can basically get away with not connecting to another planned area? I think I might be missing the...
Oh, no, I think you answered, you answered my question. And not to say that they're getting away with anything. We wouldn't want to imply that they, they're doing something unrightly. But it's more so, for example, you did give the Jackson Corridor, you know, example, or the 16. Will they be then incentivized to connect with that, knowing that, you know, a different county is also trying to take ownership of that section? But if a new community in those outlying areas, and we want to be able to connect those communities with just having a Class One or a Class Two, for example? Like, that's what I'm trying to answer.
I see, I see. So, so I think that, you know, we did our best with what developments we are familiar with now. And, you know, granted, they're all at different stages of going through their entitlements. And so you will see the, you'll see the most information about the planned areas that already have their environmental documents, but then you'll see very little about ones that are still going through the process. So we will work with the developers to ask for a bikeway exhibit that shows us that our bikeway and sidewalks that will meet up with the existing or proposed infrastructure outside of their area. And then we will also be looking to amend the plan as time goes on, so that we will, I mean, we can't have imagined every connection that will happen into the future, but we will be able to continue to amend to make sure that we maintain connectivity.
Thank you for that. And forgive me, Chair Rachel, just one last question. In some of the areas that I represent in District Five, some of our bikeways have now been impacted by, I don't want to say encampments, but there are a number of, I think, unhoused folks that have rather large numbers of properties that are making it difficult for both pedestrians and cyclists to kind of cross through. How is that at all, you know, something that was brought up to the, to the network or to the workshop? And so how would the kind of Active Transportation Plan kind of also deal with potential hazards on the road that might include those that might be unhoused?
So our, let's see. Our hope that is that in general, that bringing Class One trails out and increasing the amount of trails will help with other, with all users being able to inhabit that space, right? So yes, you will have people who are unhoused, who have nowhere else to go, but you will also have recreational riders. You'll have people walking, people even using it for... but you will also have recreational riders, you'll have people walking, um, people even using it for for getting to work. And so our our hope is that with more eyes on the street, that those spaces will be activated um and that there, they won't be um as hospitable to people wanting to just um set up camp and stay there because there there will be a lot of people walking through. And you 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 want, if you are living somewhere, you want to be somewhere where you have some, you know, some amount of privacy and uh be able to do what you want to do. So um, did that come up a lot in the um in the, in the public engagement? I didn't hear a lot. I did hear some comments um with that concern. Um, there were more uh written comments, I think, on that subject. Um. But um, again, we're not, this is a a public area um that everyone can enjoy. And so we're trying to find ways to make it so that everyone can enjoy these spaces.
Okay, thank you so much, and I appreciate your hard work on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borja. Uh, other questions from commissioners this evening?
And I'll I'll sum it up and say I've I've reviewed the um active transportation plan. And I just really appreciate all the hard work um that went into it. Um, and really trying to to prioritize. Um, obviously, we have limited funds available uh in order to focus on these improvements, but I think they are really important improvements. So I appreciate all of the outreach to the community um and the the hard look at, you know, what projects need to go first um from a safety concerns um or safety incidents um up to, you know, what what gets us the biggest bang for our buck with getting folks out of their cars and able to go to points of community interest. So uh, just want to commend you and and um, thank you for this presentation tonight. Uh, because I I feel like it's definitely a great document uh to have out there. And um, that's all I have to say on it. Do we have any action on this tonight? Uh, or is it just informational only?
We're we're bringing this as a workshop item to take any comments that you have, um, any changes you want to see in the draft plan. Um, and we're coming back uh for action from this commission in um, in August of next year.
Perfect. I think that's all of the commissioner comments. Do we want to open it up for public comments this evening? Do we have a public comment for this item this evening?
No, there are no public comments at this time.
All right, with that, we will close uh this item out then. We'll close the public comment. And if there's no further comments from commissioners, I'm gonna go ahead and close item number one.
Thank you very much.
And go ahead and announce um item number two this evening.
Okay, item number two is PLNP twenty twenty dash zero zero one three eight. Um, which is a use permit amendment, special development permit and design review located at eighty ten Orchard Blue Lane in the South Sacramento community. Um, and the environmental doc is exempt.
Good evening, Chair Rethel, members of the commission. This is David Ulri, Associate Planner, the project planner for the seven eleven at Orchard Blue Lane uh project. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, David, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, if we could go to the next slide, please. Uh, so the project's located at eighty ten Orchard Blue Lane at the southwest corner of Calvine Road and Orchard Blue Lane within the South Sacramento community. Uh, so existing conditions, the site is currently developed with an auto service station, convenience store and a car wash with uh retail to the north and auto uses to the uh west, east and south. Next slide, please. So the uh subject parcel is zoned general commercial uh with uh SC shopping center zoning to the north, uh light commercial to the east and GC to the south and west. Next slide, please. So some site history, uh, the original use permit for the uh service station and car wash uh was approved in uh May of nineteen ninety six. And that allowed for uh operation of the car wash between six AM and eleven PM as well as the twenty-four hour operation of the convenience store. Uh, the uh site was uh finished construction in two thousand. And here we have a uh photo, aerial photo of the site from two thousand and three. Um, it is important to note that uh the site was recently rezoned concurrently with the uh Calvine Road Highway ninety-nine SPA decision um to its present uh general commercial zoning. Next slide, please. So um, as previously stated, the request is a use permit amendment for a five hundred and ninety square foot addition uh to the service station convenience store, the relocation of the trash enclosure and addition of landscaping, as well as a special development permit to allow uh greater than a hundred and twenty-five square feet of signage for auto service stations. Uh, the project proposes two hundred and twenty-five square feet. Um, it also proposes a design review to determine substantial compliance with the Sacramento County countywide design guidelines. Next slide, please. Uh, so here we have the site plan. So it's a little difficult to see, but they're showing their demo plan. Um, and where the existing uh trash enclosure is, is the area of the addition to the convenience store. And the uh trash enclosure is going to be moved to the uh kind of eastern side of the car wash exit. Um, it's also important to note that they are uh proposing some additional uh landscape planters, uh finger planters in the parking lot on that first row of parking. Next slide, please. So here's the landscape plan in a little bit more detail. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so elevations, there's a, there's actually a few of these, so we'll go through them fairly quickly. But um, the applicant team did work with the design review administrator to enhance articulation on the existing building and the area of addition. Uh, new awnings and framing as well as insets were added to the existing convenience store. Next slide, please. Um, as well as uh green screen to the rear of the building. Next slide, please. Um, here's the side north elevation. Next slide. And here we have the car wash. So uh, they did add this two-tone paint scheme as well to um increase articulation. Next slide, please. And if we could go to the next slide. Here's the rear of the uh car wash. And next slide. And if we could go to the next slide. So here's a three D perspective um kind of aerial of the site uh depicting the addition. Um, once again, the area of addition is at the uh kind of right-hand corner of the um the uh existing convenience store here where that frame is shown. And next slide. So advisory recommendations, uh, the South Sacramento CPAC did meet on uh July twenty-first and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the requested entitlements. The Design Review Advisory Committee also did meet um in May of twenty twenty-one and recommends that the board uh find the project in substantial compliance with the the countywide design guidelines. Next slide, please. So project analysis, the project uh is consistent with surrounding auto-oriented land uses. Uh, there are several auto service stations in the vicinity. Um, it's consistent with the policies of the general plan as further detailed in Table Two of the staff report. It will comply with all applicable use standards for auto service stations and convenience store. Uh, all required findings of uh the zoning code for the granting of a conditional use permit can be uh made as detailed in Table Three of the staff report, as well as all required findings uh for the granting of a special development permit as detailed in Table Four. Uh, no concerns have been raised by the uh commenting agencies or departments regarding the viability of the project. And uh, no concerns have been uh raised by the public at this point. Uh, next slide, please. So some key conditions, uh condition twenty-five, landscape will be required to be installed per the uh prior approved plans, including the replacement of any existing deficiencies. Um, with the exception that uh the area that's being removed by the new can um addition uh will be made up elsewhere elsewhere on the site. Uh, condition twenty-seven, a minimum of fifteen percent of shelving space uh will be required to be reserved for healthy foods as defined by the uh Department of Public Health. Uh, this is actually an uh EJ uh implementation measure from the EJ element. And then conditions thirty-nine to fifty-nine are septic conditions related to convenience stores from the sheriff's office. And next slide, please. Uh, so staff's recommendations, uh, staff recommends that the planning commission make the following recommendations to the board. Uh, recognize the exempt status of the request under section fifteen three oh one uh class one of CEQA. Approve the use permit subject to findings and conditions. Approve the special development permit subject to findings and conditions and find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And next slide, please. So that concludes my uh presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also in attendance.
Thank you so much. Uh, questions for staff this evening, commissioners? All right, hearing done. I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to make a statement.
And we do see Mr. Mahoney on the line. And Mr. Mahoney, if you'd like to make a statement, I need to get you sworn in.
Uh, sure, it'll be brief.
Okay, so if you wish to address the commission, I um, please raise your right hand and the appropriate response is I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, um, before you make your comments, please state your name for the record and make the statement I have been sworn.
My name is Nathan Mahoney, and I have been sworn.
Thank you, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, planning commissioners for being here. I just have a brief statement here. I'm the uh third-party consultant project manager for seven eleven. Um, but we've worked through this project and think it's a, it's a great opportunity to expand this building and just offer uh a little more selection to the community. This is um on relatively the absolute small side of existing convenience stores. Um, I work on quite a few with seven eleven. Um, and typically the minimum is three thousand square feet, even with the the expansion, we're not getting quite up there. Um, so they're just proposing popping this out a little bit to provide some additional space to to get some of their newer equipment in there and um sell a wider variety of products, which do include those healthy foods um as mentioned and it as is required. That's really all I, all I have. Um, other than that, I think it's a straightforward project. And if anyone has questions to ask, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Any questions for the applicant this evening, commissioners? All right, hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and up for public comment. And do we have any commenters on the line this evening, Lydia?
And we don't. There aren't a public commenters in the queue. Can we go ahead and close that queue?
All right, and we'll be closed for public comment. Um, commissioners, uh, any deliberation or emotion?
I'm happy to move the staff recommendation. This is Cara.
Uh, second, this is Joe Phil.
All right, any, any further discussion before I call for a vote, commissioners? All right, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Okay, Commissioners Borja?
Yes.
Commissioner Borja?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Martinson?
Yes.
Tati Chi?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And Chair Rethel?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
And that'll conclude item number two. Go ahead and move us on to item number three, please.
Item number three is PLNP twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 three three. It's a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, rezoned, special development permit and design review located at thirteen thirty Elkhorn Boulevard at the southwest corner of the Elkhorn Boulevard and Fourteenth Street intersections in the Rio Linda, Alberta community and the environmental, environmental doc is exempt.
Okay, good, good evening, commissioners. This is Jessica Brandt. I'm your um project manager for this item. Uh, we also have the applicant here, Hank Verga. I believe he's um on video as well. And we have his representative, um, Nick Aptis. So this is the Hickory Hanks BBQ Rezone Project. Next slide, please. So as stated, uh, this uh site is on Elkhorn Boulevard at the southwest corner of Elkhorn and Fourteenth Street in the Rio Linda, Alberta community. This is a uh a large, long request for a a rather small project. So the request includes general plan amendment, community plan amendment, a rezone, special development permit and a design review. Next slide, please. As you can see here, this is the context of the site. Uh, the cross hatching shows the site itself. Uh, next slide is a little bit closer in. Yep, there we go. Uh, so this is an aerial photo of the site. Uh, the use of the site is both uh residential um for Mr. Verga as well as the site of the uh commercial enterprise, um, which is mainly on the northern portion of the site. And that's the area um that is looking, that we're looking at um rezoning um and for uh continuation of his business. Next slide. So project detail, um, this because it has the general plan amendment, community plan and rezone, uh, we'll be going to the board supervisors for a a final decision. The request, as I said, is to rezone uh just a portion of the existing agricultural residential property to commercial. And this is to accommodate continued commercial use on the site. Uh, Mr. Verga has uh a uh takeout um restaurant or takeout food operation on the site. And uh, that is what we're looking to accommodate moving forward here with the commercial rezone. There are no changes to the existing site layout or um no additional improvements are uh being requested uh or recommend or recommended at this time. The Design Review Administrator uh did make a recommendation to find the project in substantial compliance with our design guidelines. And the Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council met uh this summer and recommended the board approve uh the request as well. Next slide. So this one is hard to read, I apologize. I, but it effectively is showing on the right-hand side that the uh just the top portion, a little under an acre, is uh slated to have new general plan, community plan and zoning designations. So the existing designations, you have um agricultural residential under our our general plan, agricultural residential preservation area under the Rio Linda Alberta Community Plan and an AR two or agricultural residential two acre minimum as zoning. The new designations uh would be commercial and office under the general plan, limited commercial under community and uh limited commercial under the zoning designation as well. Next slide. More key points. So uh, some history here, the applicant um owner have, did receive a use permit in twenty ten or twenty eleven, excuse me, uh, for a Ben breakfast and a private social center uh in this northern portion of the site. There were some site improvements that were completed to support these uses. I'm, some were not built. Uh, for instance, there was a an event hall that was a part of that uh but was not built. There was a commercial kitchen uh that was permitted as part of that improvement package. So during the pandemic over the last year and a half, uh, the applicant began selling takeout food from the site. And unfortunately, that is not an activity that is permitted in this agres zoning. Um, nor was it something that was covered under this use permit. And so after discussions um with the county, it was determined that uh the only path forward to legalize uh this use was to the only path forward to legalize this use was to rezone the property to a commercial designation. And this also unfortunately necessitated this general plan and community plan amendment package as well. Next slide. So as I've said before, they're only requesting a portion of the property to be rezoned. We have included a rezone conditioning, condition that limits the uses that will be allowed under this new commercial zoning to those existing and approved under the 2010 use permit. This is partially because of the need to ensure that the impact of the rezone does not increase related to the environment and surrounding neighbors. So the, the items, the operations that are there now would be allowed to continue, but they could not expand. The community plan amendment does include removing this portion of the site from the agricultural residential protection area overlay. Staff is bringing this forward with a recommendation for approval. And the idea was that for this particular site, there are a number of items that are unique for this situation and that made such a change, reasonable request, and it would not necessarily degrade the preservation area overlay. And that also there are other small rural businesses that when that preservation overlay was put in place, were not included in the overlay, again acknowledging that they are small rural serving businesses. So that's the community plan amendment component. And then with the rezone, that does move the buildings into a commercial designation and they would need to meet our, our development standards for commercial buildings. Unfortunately, the way that the site has been developed, it doesn't meet that. Doesn't mean that it's, it's bad. It just was built within the context of an agricultural residential parcel at the time. And so there is a special development permit that has been added to effectively legalize all of the buildings and the site improvements as they sit. Again, staff has limited this as just pertaining to the buildings at hand. There would not be the ability to utilize the special development permit for expansions should they be requested. And then finally, the applicant has also provided some arguments to support the, the compatible use of this commercial area. The, the use of the property has been ongoing for a number of years and that the continued use in this manner would not cause a negative impact on the surrounding properties. Next slide. So here's the site plan. As I mentioned, no changes to the building or the site layout would be part of this. It would just simply be colors on a map effectively. And the access would continue to be from Elkhorn Boulevard. And the operations would continue as they have. Next slide. And so the recommendations, these are, it's a bit of a beast here, but we are recommending the planning commission take the following action, which is approving a resolution to authorize the amendments to the general plan land use designation of the project site from ag rez to commercial office, subject to findings. And then the second component is recommend, recommending the planning commission make the following recommendations to the board. And that is recognizing the exempt status of the request under CEQA. Approving a resolution authorizing the, an amendment to the general plan land use designation of the project site from agricultural residential to commercial office, again, subject to findings. That they recommend to the board that they approve a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Rio Linda, Alberta Community Plan land use designation from ag rez to with a preservation area overlay to LC, which is limited commercial. Next, next slide, please. And there's more. Adopt an ordinance authorizing a rezone of the project site from the AR2 zone to the LC zone subject to findings and the conditions, including the condition on restrictions on operations that I had mentioned. Prove the special development permit, which is attached to the package, subject to findings and conditions. And finally, find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, again, subject to findings and conditions. I believe there's one last slide. And this is a view of the site from the south and that completes staff's presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I mentioned at the beginning, both the applicant and his representative are also available. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. Questions for staff this evening, commissioners? All right, hearing done. I'll invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to address the commission this evening. You need to get sworn in first.
Okay, well, we have Mr. Verga sworn in and Mr. Abdis, will you be speaking this evening?
If necessary, yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and get you sworn in, please.
Okay.
Okay, please raise your right hand and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, and please state your name for the record and make the statement I have been sworn.
Yeah, this is Nick Abdis with the Thomas Law Group. I have been sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Abdis.
Thank you. I know Mr. Hickory Hank is on the line and would like to make a few remarks and I'll be available for, for questions afterwards. So thank you again for the opportunity to be before you today.
Mr. Hickory Hank, you have the floor.
Yep. Well, thank you. First, I want to thank the county and Jessica for all their hard work and understanding and helping me get through all this difficult times. As you might think, being a restaurateur in some aspects and the catering I've done the last 30 years and a whole lot of lying area and what COVID has done to us has just been, you know, pretty much unbelievable. But anyway, all that being said, you know, the, the reason why we even started the takeout was to help support us through the COVID and just looking to try to move forward and improve things for ourselves and, and keep my staff busy and working. And just hoping that you can see forward that this is something that, that isn't hurting the community at the present time. And I feel the community is behind us and hope to be able to sustain this for many years to come. And that's pretty much my comments at the present moment. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Mr. Verga. Any questions, commissioners, for the applicant this evening? All right, I'm not hearing any questions, Mr. Verga. Mr. Abdis, thanks for being with us this evening. We're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. Lydia, do you have a number for how many public commenters we have this evening on the item?
And surprisingly, there are no verbal public comments evening.
Well, great. We got a lot of written public comments supporting Mr. Hickory Hank and we appreciate all those folks that chimed in in support. It, while reading them all, I was really wanting to get down there and have some barbecue. So I'll, I'll be down there soon to, to give it a try on a Friday. So hopefully you get a lot of new customers for this experience going through. It's looks like a lot of details to work through with the county. All right, commissioners, any further discussion or motion this evening?
Hi, this is Commissioner Borhat. I'd like to move and approve a staff recommendation.
This is Commissioner Tati Chi. I'd like to second.
All right, I'll give a moment for commissioners. Is there any further discussion before we call for a vote? All right, hearing no further discussion from the commission. Will you please call the roll?
Absolutely. And Chair, I can close this item, public comment queue at this time if you'd like.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the roll call vote, Commissioners Borhat?
Yes.
Martenson?
Yes.
Tati Chi?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And Raythel?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Hickory Hank. Thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you all and I highly appreciate it. Come see me, would you?
Will do. All right, with that, we're going to move on to item number four this evening.
All righty, and item number four is PLNP 2011-00095 for general plan amendments, community plan amendments, zoning ordinance amendments, Jackson Township specific plan adoption, adoption of the public facilities financing plan, adoption of Jackson Township Urban Services Plan, adoption of a water supply master plan amendment and water supply assessment located in the northeast corner of Excelsior Road and Jackson Road in the Cordova Vineyard Communities and the environmental dock is a recirculated draft environmental impact report.
Good evening, commissioners. Todd Smith, principal planner for Sacramento County here presenting this item tonight. Next slide, please. So this is the Jackson Township specific plan. It is one of four major master plans along the Jackson Highway corridor. The project includes just over 1,390 acres at the northeast corner of Jackson Road and Excelsior Road. Just south of Independence at Mather, an existing neighborhood to the north there. The project is outside of what's known as the urban policy area or UPA. But it's inside the urban services boundary or the USB. And those are two boundaries in the general plan that the county uses with respect to growth management. The project site contains the existing Sacramento Raceway. The project has gone to the Vineyard and Cordova CPACs multiple times and both CPACs have recommended approval of the project. You, as the planning commission, previously heard hearings on the draft DIR and the recirculated draft DIR. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive your recommendation for the Board of Supervisors. Next slide, please. So just to give you a little geographic context, the Jackson Township project is that I'll call it salmon color, right in the middle of the screen there. To the east, you see in green, the New Bridge specific plan that was approved in fall 2020. To the north is the Mather South Community Master Plan approved in January 2020. And then to the west, the proposed West Jackson Highway Master Plan that is currently going through the process. Jackson Highway runs right down the middle and on the east boundary is Sunrise Boulevard. The west boundary of the corridor for our planning purposes is Watt Avenue or South Watt Avenue, excuse me. Next slide, please. So I want to give you a real high-level overview of what the project requests include. It includes multiple general plan amendments to move the UPA, the urban policy area. Amendments to the land use diagram that would reflect the proposed land uses. It would amend the transportation plan to reflect the perimeter roadways at Excelsior, Jackson, Kiefer and the like. And then an amendment to the bicycle master plan, which would show the proposed on and off-street trail network. Project also includes community plan amendments for both the Vineyard and Cordova community plans, given that the project lies within both of those communities. And the project does request adoption of the Jackson Township specific plan, the development standards and the design guidelines that are included in your packet tonight. The project also has a public facilities financing plan and an urban services plan, an affordable housing strategy and a Zone 40 water supply master plan amendment and a water supply assessment. And the last two, I want to make note that those are actions that would be taken by the Sacramento County Water Agency Board of Directors. Next slide, please. A little bit of onsite context here. Most of the requested entitlements at this time only apply to applicant-owned properties. Applicant owns about 64% of the plan area. This graphic on the slide shows the non-participating owners with the, the crosshatched. The applicant ownership does not have any layer over the top of it. I'm making this point because the county's general plan in our growth management criteria, policy LU 119 does require logical planning boundaries for expansion of the urban policy area. And so it's by the county's request to comply with this policy that the applicant has included these non-participating properties within the larger Jackson Township specific plan area. Next slide, please. And so I'm just briefly going to run through some exhibits to go with all the words I just said. The urban policy area expansion, you can see on this graphic, the existing UPA is the gray color. It would be with the project would expand to include the Jackson Township plan area. Next slide, please. The general plan land use designations on the left, what's existing, some extensive industrial and some, excuse me, extensive industrial, about 823, give or take acres, and then general ag, about 567 acres would be redesignated in the general plan land use diagram to reflect the proposed land uses, the mix of low density, medium density, high density, open space preserves and commercial and mixed use as well. And office. Next slide, please. The transportation plan amendments, just to get your bearings here, Jackson Road on the south, Excelsior Road on the west. These would be redesignated as pre 2030 roadways in the general plan. They're currently designated as post 2030. One thing I want to make mention of on this slide, you can see the on Excelsior roadway, it has this left of the Y going to the northwest. That would align with a future Douglas Road bypass that the county is currently going through design on. Next slide, please. The bicycle master plan amendments include all of the onsite trail network, both on and off-street. I mention, I make mention of this because the bicycle master plan is a policy plan that's incorporated into the general plan. And I think commissioners in your earlier comments on item one, the active transportation plan, that does supersede or will supersede the bicycle master plan upon its approval later next year. So this exhibit actually shows the, the effort that staff and the applicant have engaged to put forth a robust onsite trail network that connects to the projects to the east, New Bridge and to the west in the West Jackson Plan area, as well as to the north at Independence at Mather. Next slide, please. But here you see the Vineyard and Cordova community plans respectively. It's really that north, northern triangle piece, north of Kiefer Boulevard that's in the Cordova Community Plan. The rest of the project area is in the Vineyard Community Plan and all of the project area would be a change to show Jackson Township specific plan within both the Vineyard and Cordova Community Plan areas. Next slide, please. This exhibit is the proposed land use plan. Excuse me. And I want to just briefly touch on a few things. What you can see here, the yellows are the low-density residential. The oranges are medium density. Browns are high density. The oranges are medium-density. Browns are high-density. And the reds are general commercial. The purple color is office. And the darker bluish color kind of central in the project along Jackson Highway is proposed mixed use. The project does include, actually, go to the next slide. I'll get into the details here. So the specific plan itself is what would be the policy plan the county would use to ensure that future development with the plan within the plan area meets the standards, the policies of the specific plan, as well as the development standards and design guidelines. They would effectively become the land use regulatory document to guide future development within the plan. Next slide, please. So the project itself includes five thousand six hundred and ninety dwelling units, varying density, low-density, all the way up to high-density. A little over two million square feet of commercial and office space. Four hundred and eight acres of open space and parks, and that includes almost two hundred and sixty acres of natural preserve. The project includes three elementary school sites and one high school, middle school site, and these were all developed in coordination with Elk Grove Unified School District, who is the school district in this area. The open space was coordinated through the South SAC Habitat Conservation Plan Team. And the park locations have been coordinated with Cordova Rec and Park District. Project includes a fire station site that would meet SAC Metro Fire District sighting criteria to enable appropriate response times. The project also includes about seventy-four point seven acres in the southeast corner of existing agricultural residential uses. And there's no change proposed to those existing uses. They were simply included at the request of the county to meet that LU 119 logical planning boundary requirement. Next slide, please. So a little more in the details here. The project, and when I say project, I mean alternative two, is consistent with the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, which has hardline preserve strategy, as well as avoidance and minimization measures. The land use plan does reflect the hardline preserve strategy as it relates to the site. And the specific plan does include those avoidance and minimization measures. The project does have a substantial amount of open space. Got eight active recreation parks, consistent with the Cordova Recreation and Park District standards. It does have an extensive trail network onsite that does provide connectivity off-site to adjacent projects. Next slide, please. So alternative two, want to briefly touch on this. The graphic here shows the South SAC HCP Preserve Strategy, the Hardline Preserves, and the project area is outlined in red. The sequel analysis for this project began well before the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan was adopted. As the project was going through the environmental review process, the county did request that the applicant design a land use alternative that would be consistent with the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. And that is alternative two. It includes a larger onsite wetland preserve, Bernal Pool Preserve. The South SAC HCP was adopted in 2018. And it does include, as I mentioned before, the hardline preserve strategy. Alternative two was covered in the same level of detail as the original proposed project in the EIR for Jackson Township. And alternative two, alternative two was identified as the alternative environmentally superior alternative, excuse me. Next slide, please. Just want to briefly touch on some of the changes that were made in alternative two. On the left was the original proposed project. You can see the north and east is where that onsite preserve was originally laid out. And on the right, you can see alternative two, that large kind of bulb area popping out on the preserve. That expanded the preserve significantly and reduced the acreage of low-density development, residential development, excuse me. Other changes in alternative two were made in response to community feedback during the early outreach. For example, some of the residents at Independence at Mather to the north recommended switching the community commercial and medium-density locations in the northwest corner. So those have been changed in alternative two. The along the kind of central area just west of the preserve pop out, you could see some of the medium-density land use has been slightly reduced from thirteen to ten, just in that that area. And then a few other changes due to property ownership changes along the way. For example, in the southeast corner, that low-density residential sliver was changed from ag to, it was originally ag, was changed to low-density in alternative two. Next slide, please. So public facilities and services is a big topic for a specific plan. The project does include an extension of a trunk sewer line from off-site to the west. It includes an extension of the potable water supply infrastructure that currently exists off-site from the east. The project includes a drainage master plan that shows how with the, with the project and the future build-out, how the onsite drainage can be accommodated to deal with stormwater runoff. The fire station is included in, and schools and parks are all included in the Public Facilities and Services documents. The project includes a robust transit service that I think the applicant is going to touch on in their presentation, but briefly, the transit service that the county staff has advocated for is robust, complies with general plan policies. In this case, we're talking about fifteen-minute headways during peak hour and thirty-minute headways during the off-peak hour during the week. The public facilities finances, financing plan and urban services plan go into extensive detail on all the costs for the infrastructure, the facilities, and their ongoing operations and maintenance. Those are included in the staff package. Next slide, please. So environmental review for a project of this magnitude, and given the topics that we need to address for sequel purposes, we did a, prepare an environmental impact report. The first, the draft EIR was published in September of 2019. Went through the typical public review process, distribution. The Planning Commission conducted a hearing on the draft EIR in October 2019. We received thirty-nine comment letters on that draft EIR. Subsequently, the applicant requested preparation of a recirculated draft EIR that would address some of the public comments and clarify and expand on the analysis of the draft EIR. That recirculated draft EIR was published in May of this year, went through the same public review process. And the Planning Commission conducted a hearing on that recirculated draft EIR in June 2021. And we received fifteen comment letters. All of those comment letters are, have been distributed to you all. And they are, staff is in the process of being, or preparing a response to comments that addresses all the comments received. And a final EIR is being prepared. I do want to make some, a brief, couple of brief comments about some of those comments. The couple of comments raised an issue about vehicle miles traveled. We are doing some additional analysis around that topic. And we expect to include that in the final EIR. Another set of comments we received from Amador County Transportation Commission. And I bring this one up in particular because they also commented on the adjacent project, New Bridge specific plan. Staff has had a recent meeting with ACTC representatives to discuss those comments. We are developing some draft language for an additional condition of approval to be included in Attachment Two. That deals with reservation of fourteen feet of right-of-way within what is proposed as a thirty-foot public utilities and public facilities easement along the north side of Jackson Highway. Those details are currently being worked out via collaborative conversation with ACTC representatives. Next slide, please. So general plan consistency. The staff's analysis shows that the project meets all the criteria of LU 120. This is one of those other policies in the general plan dealing with growth management. The project achieves nineteen points out of the total available. And I want to make note here, this is, the project is one of the most dense along the Jackson Highway corridor. Overall. The public facilities financing plan and urban services plan include all the necessary infrastructure costs and services with appropriate funding mechanisms. The fiscal impact analysis, which is included in your staff report package, demonstrates that there is no negative impact on the general fund or to existing ratepayers. The project includes habitat avoidance that is consistent with the South Sacramento HCP. The affordable housing strategy, the applicant in this case proposes payment of the affordable housing fee that's outlined in the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And the sites that are in, within the project area, the high-density sites, could be available for Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to purchase. Just by way of context, the projects previously approved to the east, New Bridge and Mather South, had a slightly different approach. They via their development agreements, entered into affordable housing strategy that consisted of fee payment and land dedication, which has been staff's recommendation over the years because we have an obligation as the county to meet the requirements to produce affordable housing in large development projects. Having said that, I do want to make the point that the applicant's affordable housing strategy is legally permissible based on the county's current affordable housing ordinance. And I do recognize that the applicant has agreed to comply with whatever county-wide ordinances or programs that may be adopted by the Board of Supervisors in the future. Next slide, please. So at this point, thanks for sticking with us so far. I want to touch on a couple of issues that were raised in the staff report toward the later sections, dealing with the topics on the screen or on this slide. So the development agreement, infrastructure fee credits, the Sacramento Raceway noise mitigation, and the CRPD Development Impact Fee. So as I mentioned, the projects to the east, I'm sorry, before I go there, I want to make note that as the lead agency, staff's responsibility is to inform the public and to inform the hearing bodies regarding any potential issues or concerns. And so this is why staff is raising these. We believed it was important to identify the differences here with Jackson Township due to parity concerns. And so the development agreement here, development agreements are voluntary agreements between the jurisdiction and an applicant. We did have development agreements with New Bridge and Mather South. However, those were entered into willingly with those applicants. In this case, the applicant has elected not to enter into a development agreement at this time. I mentioned earlier, the affordable housing strategy was a part of those DAs. The DAs also included an infill fee. The infill fee was a thousand dollars per dwelling unit equivalent. Excuse me. At this point, staff has included that infill fee in the draft climate action plan that the commission heard several weeks ago. But I do also want to reemphasize that the applicant's not entering into a DA at this time is legally permissible. It is a voluntary agreement. The infrastructure fee credits question, this has to do with the fact that the applicant will likely be the one fronting all the cost for that off-site infrastructure from the west into the east, bringing it to the project in its first phase. We've had a lot of discussions with the applicant, the Sacramento Area Sewer District, the County Water Agency regarding the what the sewer district ordinance and the SAC County Water Agency code can allow at this point with respect to requiring subsequent developers to reimburse the initial applicant or developer who fronts those costs. Currently, those ordinances do not provide for subsequent developers to be required to reimburse initial developers who front those costs. That's just the state of those ordinances and codes at this point. The Sacramento Raceway noise mitigation issue, I mentioned earlier that the raceway does exist on the site. It is an existing use within the plan area that creates noise by virtue of all the events that are held there. The secret document identified these noise impacts and included feasible mitigation that would reduce or deal with that existing noise source if it existed at the time of future development. So think residential development proximate to that noise source, how we deal with that. We have heard from the raceway owners recently that they are scheduled to close the raceway in November of 2023. The mitigation measure that is currently in the EIR would not be applicable if the raceway was no longer operational. And then finally, the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Development Impact Fee. The County Board of Supervisors has had a couple of hearings on this fee program. In fact, it's on the board agenda for tomorrow. But the board has not yet adopted this fee program. And so the project's financing plan includes language that reflects what I've already said. That is, the applicant would participate in that fee program upon its adoption by the board. Next slide, please. So outreach. Projects like this of this magnitude that go on for quite a while have a lot of outreach associated with them. And we, the county, conducted outreach through stakeholder meetings, mailed notices to nearby property owners, several public workshops, as well as posting new information on our webpage and an email subscription list. Master plans in Sacramento County also have a technical advisory committee, which is which includes all the service providers, the county departments, and the like. County staff also consult with Native American tribes in the area as part of that process. We had hearing body workshops at both Vineyard and Cordova CPACs over the years, as well as joint workshops on all the Jackson Highway master plans in 2013 and 16. Next slide. So staff's recommendation here is that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the requested entitlements to the board. And that includes general plan amendments, community plan amendment, the specific plan development standards and design guidelines for the project, the public facilities financing plan and urban services plan, the Zone Forty Water Supply Master Plan Amendment, and the water supply assessment. And those two would be to the Sacramento County Water and the Water Supply Assessment, and those two would be to the Sacramento County Water Agency Board of Directors. I do want to clarify one thing here, just by way of conversations I've had recently. The original project description included proposal to rezone the applicant owned properties. The applicant has elected not to pursue the rezone at this time. But we did have a large lot tentative subdivision map that was included in the analysis in the E I R as well. And we included that large lot map as a draft in the staff report package, but I do want to clarify that we are not requesting any action on either the rezone that was originally proposed or the large lot tentative map tonight. Those would be subsequent actions at at a time where the applicant elects to move forward with those. Next slide, please. Staff recommendation, in addition, the planning commission may offer the board comments they might have on any of those issues that we raised. Again, I want to reiterate that the applicant's approach here on these issues is legally permissible. And next slide. I think that's the end of my presentation, so I'll take any questions from the commissioners.
Thanks, Todd. I appreciate that detailed presentation. I'm going to open it up to the other commissioners for questions to kick it off.
I'm happy to start. This is Cara. Excuse me, I had a bite of food in my mouth. Apologize. I'm curious, and this is probably for, well, I don't know if you can answer this, but maybe staff that's focused more on our affordable housing ordinance in Rena. You know, what the thought process is, if sort of that's the the wisdom of staff that you need to dedicate half the land and then fee out the rest. Why that isn't part of kind of the overall approach to the ordinance and if it's just sort of more specific to these master plans or that, you know, there's maybe some thinking of the county that they're going to be revising that ordinance.
Sure, I can respond to that. Right now, the ordinance provides for fee payments as one of the options to comply. There are a couple of other options that include a development agreement. The decision to commit the county to spending fifty percent of the fees collected in large projects was made by the board when the current affordable housing ordinance was adopted in two thousand and fourteen. Staff does have a program, you may or may not recall, in the housing element that where staff would reevaluate the efficacy of the ordinance, and we are actually having conversations about revisiting that topic, particularly in if it's even clarifying what staff's intent is to achieve affordable housing production in these large project areas. With respect to staff's approach on the blend of land dedication and fee payment, that came out of a conversation with S H R A, actually multiple conversations, where it can be challenging from their perspective to cite an affordable housing development project within a community that's kind of already progressing with development. And so they felt it was beneficial to have sites designated, site or sites depending on the scale, designated as early as possible in the development process of a of a large specific plan. And so that's how we collectively came up with the recommendation to blend some portion of land dedication and some portion of fee payment.
Okay, so it sounds like it's evolving slightly. I mean, I guess I'm just curious, sort of my motivation asking the question is, are we finding that it's just more and more difficult to meet our numbers based on sort of the ordinance that's on the books?
I don't know that I have all the information to answer that at this point. But certainly, the new Rena requirement that's in the housing element is very ambitious. It's going to be challenging one way or the other, regardless of this particular issue.
Yeah, for sure. Hopefully, some of the additional funding from the state will help with that. And then my my other comments were sort of about the area designated as commercial and office, but I think I'm going to reserve those for when the applicant speaks. That's it for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinson. Other commissioner questions for staff this evening? All right, hearing done right now from other commissioners, I'll throw in a couple. I heard you talk on a number of the you know, the Amador County Transportation Commission and their concerns they brought up in their letter. I appreciate that as it marked off one of my questions. And one of the other ones was from the city of Jackson, and I'm just curious what staff's view is on the city of Jackson's concerns with confusion over the name and response of emergency services.
Sure, staff's view on that is that in the future, when there is a development happening in Jackson Township. But what we have found through communication with the emergency service providers, whether it's Metro Fire or Sac Sheriff or others, they actually go through a list of getting information from, for example, someone who calls nine one one. They actually go for details like street addresses or or landmarks or additional details beyond what the project name is at a certain point in time. We our view is that that process through which the service providers request that detailed information is sufficient through the dispatch process. And we don't think there's a potential for confusion for somebody, an emergency service provider going to Jackson Township instead of the city of Jackson in Amador County.
And do we expect larger signs that say Jackson Township? Or do we expect that to be the name of the specific plan, but smaller developments within that will probably go by different names anyway?
I would defer to the applicant on that. That's probably likely in their future marketing efforts, but at this point, it's just the name of the specific plan itself.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant on that. So this with the development agreement, I think I'm I'm clear on that is that basically the applicant's approach so far is consistent with current ordinance.
That's correct. There is no ordinance of the county that requires an applicant to enter into a development agreement. Development agreements are voluntary.
And so the not paying the infill fee and also not dedicating land is consistent with the current ordinance.
That's correct. The the infill fee currently has not been adopted by the board as a countywide requirement. It's just in D A's that are applicable to two other projects. It is in the draft climate action plan. But that has not yet been adopted either.
Thank you for clarifying. The park impact fees, I understand the impact on the feasibility analysis. But at the end of the day, since they are part of the park improvement district or maintenance district, they will have to pay the fees at the time as approved, right? They don't pay the fees that are in their estimate. It's just it's just a question of economic feasibility. It's not a agreement that they will pay lesser fees. Is that correct?
I think that's correct. I think the presuming that the board adopts the the fee program, then the applicant would be subject to that fee program in the future.
Okay, because there's no no development agreement in place which would protect them from increased fees in the future.
That's correct.
So, okay, I got that clear then. I'm just going to kind of go through my points and make sure I understand things correctly, as there was a lot of information. So the last one I had was really the the sewer district, and I'm just trying to understand. So the the applicant goes out and builds a backbone infrastructure for sewer. In the future, somebody wants to tie into that backbone infrastructure. And if I read the report correctly, it's that instead of reimbursing the cost that the developers paid, they would pay, they could pay the impact fee to the Sacramento Area Sewer District instead. And S A S D would be required to hook them up. Does that mean that S A S D would not then turn over those reimbursements to the developer? How? I guess I'm a little confused on on how that would work in actuality. They'd be able to connect the infrastructure that they didn't pay for?
Sure, there, well, before I respond, let me clarify a little bit. So the for S A S D, they do have sewer ordinance, a sewer ordinance that provides for reimbursement agreements, and that's the mechanism that S A S D uses to reimburse the developers who advance fund the necessary infrastructure. So right now, that ordinance does not contain provisions that would require a future developer to purchase credits from the original developer who funded the infrastructure. It would need to go through the reimbursement agreement which are both in the sewer district ordinance and the County Water Agency Code on a water supply infrastructure. That's how the reimbursement would occur.
So right now, as you see it, they still would be required to reimburse the developer. But I guess they're not really required. I guess, is there any way that they could hook up to that backbone infrastructure without reimbursement for the developer?
You mean a subsequent developer hooking up to sewer?
Correct, like non participating owners. I'm just I'm just thinking we've we force the boundaries, which I love. It makes it makes it, you know, I guess that part of the process makes sense to me, but because we've forced the boundaries to be consistent, now they have to carry not participating partners. If they don't get reimbursed for the backbone infrastructure, then it's kind of it's really harsh on the developer as there is a significant portion that are not participating in this city plan.
Sure, I think the the mechanism right now to address that would be the reimbursement agreement through S A S D. Where S A S D then reimburses the original developer as opposed to a future developer going directly to the original developer.
Got it. So they the money just then passes through S A S D.
That's my understanding.
Okay, that that's what I wanted. I was just trying to to work that out in my head because it sounded like they're just going to have to pay for the connection, right, instead of the entire portion of the backbone. So that that makes a lot more sense to me. I understand that. And then, you know, I guess what happens, I guess I do have one more really is is with the raceway. This is an interesting one. I don't I don't even know where to start on how we have a operating raceway in the county that goes on for years with multiple code violations and yet still operates. It's fascinating to me that this this exists in the first place. And I so I understand the applicant's concern with the idea that they shouldn't be held to to noise issues that's there. What happens if the raceway does not shut down in two thousand and twenty three? Would the applicant then have to mitigate the noise with all the boundary properties?
So in a hypothetical scenario where the raceway continues, then that mitigation measure, I think it's number seven in the noise chapter of the E I R would be applicable. I think it provides for buffers and and other mechanisms to attenuate noise. For example, interior noise would be dealt with through construction methods, windows and extra insulation, that kind of thing. That's my understanding at this point. I don't, I can't speak to whether the raceway would close in two thousand and twenty three. I just know that's what the app or the the raceway owners have indicated to us.
And and do you know the history on why does the county not have authority to close a non permitted use?
I think I'm going to defer to county council on this one.
Do we have county council on the line this evening?
Yeah, this is Bill Burke. The question, if the question, does the county have authority to close a non permitted use? The answer is yes. County does have that authority. Now, why that hasn't happened here, there are a lot of details that I have not been involved with in. I think there have been kind of interim agreements reached with the owner. My understanding. I don't know all the circumstances of there's any kind of arguments about grandfathering or or what their defense might be, but if I'm going to say if it is a clearly nonconforming use, then yes, the county has authority to open up a code enforcement case to disallow that use.
Okay. Yeah, it's it's a tough one because it's like we were kind of just carrying this non resolved issue forward and forward. So I guess that answers my question, but it still leaves me with a lot of other questions. So I'll I'll leave that for now. I can see how the applicant would would not want to pay for mitigation of a non permitted use that that shouldn't it shouldn't be there. So I guess I'm struggling with not having all the details on that. I obviously don't want to, you know, I don't want to take sides in it. It's just weird that it's just sitting there unresolved. And that's what we're carrying forward when when we're trying to plan for it. So that's all my questions for staff. I'm going to move on to other commissioners. We have questions for staff. All right, I believe we have an applicant presentation this evening.
Yes, good evening, Chair Ethel and Commissioners. I think I have to be sworn. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Thank you. And will any of the other applicant members of the applicant team be speaking this evening? I know we have a few of you on board.
Most likely not, but if they do, then we'll have them sworn at the time.
Okay, all right. So if you wish to address the commission, please prepare to be sworn and raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear this testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God, you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And please state your name for the record and make the statement I have been sworn.
Jim Wiley and I have been sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
So good evening, Chair Ethel and Commissioners. First, I would like to thank Todd Smith for his presentation and the work he's done on this project. As you can tell, there's been a lot of work on all parts, and we have a very good project here before you. I'm representing Stokoplis Investments, and here with me tonight is Angelo G. Stokoplis and his team. So we'll be available to answer any questions. At the outset, I'd like to mention two things. One, we are meeting with A C T C to work through their concerns. And we had a meeting last week and we're getting an exhibit put together and we'll continue to work with them as we go forward with the project. And then two, there's additional analysis that Todd referenced that's being done on the environmental document based upon based upon the comments that we received back in June. At the end of this meeting, if the commission wishes to close the hearing but wait for the additional environmental analysis to make its recommendation, we're fine with that. You know, traditionally the, um, planning commission does not have the, um, final EIR before them. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna get started. Um, next slide, please. So, to start my presentation, I'd like to address the larger planning context in which Jackson Township is an integral part. That being the Jackson Highway Corridor. Clear county growth policy direction points that Jackson Corridor is set has been set in motion and is the growth for the next 50 plus years for housing in this, uh, community. As you're aware, this corridor consists of four master plan projects. And as you are also aware, two of those projects, Mather South and New Bridge have already been approved. And these two projects to the east presuppose the two projects to the west, Jackson Township and West Jackson. So for all practical purposes, Jackson Township has already been approved. Why? Because the inner relationship of the four projects. The transportation mitigation strategy was approved by the board and uh, covers how roads, transit and trails will be developed for all four projects. The schools on Jackson Township include a high school and a middle school, which will serve the two projects to the east. The fire station at Jackson Township is a battalion chief station where um, it will be the main, uh, fire station for the corridor. Uh, jobs and retail services are included in the cumulative reduction in greenhouse gas for all of the four projects and the Mather South and New Bridge projects. So you, as you can see, they're very, uh, tied together and with a purring the first do it sets in motion the next two. Next slide, please. So that leads us to this slide, which you already saw in Todd's presentation, but why is Jackson Township a greenfield infill project? You have to the east the city of Rancho Cordova. Then you have the two projects that have improved, may, been approved, Mather South and New Bridge. You have to the north, the Mather Independence. Uh, project that's been there for a long time as part of the, uh, Mather Air Force. And then to the west, you have the pending West Jackson project and the city of Sacramento. And I would just indicate that West Jackson highway was kind of skipped over in the last 30 years for development. Primarily because of the Mather Air Force Base and then secondarily because of the, um, mining operations along the corridor. Next slide, please. So what is being changed in the general plan? Uh, for a, from a land use perspective? First, the urban policy area, area which, um, Todd walked through and then second, and please, next slide. Uh, we are taking 823 acres of urban designated land, extensive industrial and 491 acres of general ag and converting them to 804 acres of housing and jobs and 510 acres of public use and open space that's schools, uh, greenbelt, uh, the natural preserve. And then there's about 77 acres that will remain in general ag. Um, next slide, please. So why is this project so important? Well, first, as we just discussed, Jackson Township is part of a whole the Jackson Corridor. And second, and more importantly, because we have two serious issues facing the county and really the state, if not the world. And those issues are a need for housing and the need to address climate change, or in other words, reduce greenhouse gas. Jackson Township addresses both. Next slide, please. So first, with regard to meeting our housing need, um, as many of you are aware, that especially if you have children that are, um, I mean, uh, into their twenties, uh, this is the largest generation that in the history of the US and it's gonna hit the housing market, well, it is hitting the market right now. So Jackson Township provides 5,690 units and is well-designed with an average density of 10.6 units per acre. It also has 36% of it in high density, which exceeds the county, um, arena requirements, which is only 33.6. It is the most dense of the four projects along the quarter. Next slide, please. So this exhibit is kind of repetitive. It just depicts the mix of the types of housings, the their acreage and the average density. And again, the key numbers are 10.6 average density, 5,690 units and 36% um, high density. Next slide, please. And since Todd ran through this and went through what all the colors are, I will not do that for you. Um, it just indicate that the higher densities are located near jobs and retail um, as well as along the major road corridors and the mixed use in particulars in the town center along Jackson. Next slide, please. This slide, uh, depicts visually the mix of housing types. Again, low density, medium density, high density and mixed use. Uh, Jackson Township accordingly provides for a range of housing as part of the Jackson Corridor, helping the county to meet its housing need. Next slide, please. So now back to the other issue. Climate change or really greenhouse gas reduction. As everyone is aware and you are are in particular, as you recently heard, the county's climate action plan. We need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Jackson Township does this through the following means: location, smart growth design, enhanced transit program and TMA program and reduction measures. So let me walk through those um, individually. Next slide, please. Again, as discussed above, this project is really an infill location between two cities directly south of Mather at Independence and west of the New Bridge and Mather South projects. There are significant jobs within five miles, uh, the job centers such as, uh, Cor- Rancho Cordova, Mather and the Innovations, um, Center or Technology, uh, Zone in the city of Sacramento to the west. And the project or the, um, Jackson Township is also 10 miles away from the city core, uh, city of Sacramento. Next slide, please. So smart growth design is a key component of the 2011 general plan update. And as Todd, Todd indicated, projects moving the UPA must meet certain smart growth design factors and Jackson Township does this. Um, I'm gonna just highlight a couple of these and you're gonna get tired of me saying 10.6 uh, units per acre, uh, density. Um, jobs, housing balance between point nine and one. So within the project, there's a a balance of housing and jobs. Todd mentioned the connections to existing and future developments with our trails and roads and transit. And then 260 acres of HCP preserved within the plan boundaries and pet and transit orientation with over 12 miles of trails. Uh, next slide, please. And these next few slides are just kind of examples of, uh, the smart growth here. This shows the housing within a quarter mile of walking distance to schools and parks. The majority of the, the project is within a quarter mile of those cert- those features. Next slide, please. You already saw the bikeway master plan and again, the 12 miles of trails. Next slide, please. Uh, this is our greenway that goes through the middle of the project and combines, uh, the drainage system and a regional, uh, bike trail that goes across the middle and connects between the West Jackson Plan and the New Bridge Plan. And then, next slide, please. Finally, the town center, which shows a mix of uses, including housing and retail as well as a transit center. And speaking of transit, we'll go to the next slide. Um, so part of Jackson Township, uh, is an enhanced transit program. Uh, the Jackson Township team has worked hard with the RT staff to develop this program. It went before the RT board and about two to three years ago, um, and it's not just a shuttle or a bus to connect to light rail. This program sets up an annual assessment program from the start that funds annual passes for residents and employees that can be used on the entire RT system. It ultimately provides for a bus line through Rosemont to the Manlove Light Rail Station, the cost of which is covered by the annual assessment. And as Todd mentioned, it will have a 15-minute peak and, uh, 30-minute non-peak hour headway. The program also includes a Transportation Management Association and the services provided by that. Next slide, please. So last but not least, our actual greenhouse gas reduction measures, which I am highlighting a few of these, um, as you, you're aware, uh, in these new uh, planning areas, there will be no natural gas, which is a big reduction. Cal Green Tier Two standards will be applied and they will be the standards that are in place at the time of map approval. The project includes in its greenhouse gas reduction plan, um, electric vehicle infrastructure, including in the low and medium density, um, a hundred percent, uh, plug, uh, ready, uh, I'm trying to think of the right term, but anyway, the, the infrastructure to plug in your electric vehicle, high density will have 10%. And then we have in public parking throughout the community, uh, committed to 690, uh, plug-in stations. Um, the line is there because there's a number of measures that were not calculated into our, um, environmental document as far as reductions and that's the elimination of current uses within the plan area, including grazing, the raceway, um, and, uh, other operations that are out there. So that we did not subtract those out in the original environmental document. Um, tree planting, we anticipate about eight, over 20,000 trees being planted through the landscape corridors as well as at the residence and in the parks. Um, and then there will be a total of over 1,130 acres preserved in open space for sequestration um, as well as mitigation, uh, pursuant to the HCP. And finally, uh, this project's conditioned on the implementation, implementation of cap measures uh, to meet the cap standards and that would include um, any infill fee that the, the county so adopts through ordinance. Next slide, please. So I have one more key point and that's that the, the project before you now is alternative to, it was modified uh, because the HCP was adopted and, and, um, it provides for 260 acres of onsite preserve, um, which connects with the Mather Preserve and the New Bridge Preserve. Uh, next slide, please. And this is another depiction of how it's consistent with the HCP. Uh, next slide, please. So in conclusion, um, Jackson Township is integrated part of the larger Jackson Corridor. Um, the projects to the east are intricately tied to the projects to the west. Uh, the two major issues, uh, facing the county are housing and climate change and both are addressed by Jackson Township. Uh, Jackson Township brings a mix of 5,690 units with an average density again of 10.6 units per acre. Um, greenhouse gas is addressed through location, smart growth design and reduction measures and, uh, an enhanced, uh, transportation per, or transit program. The project's consistent with this South Sacramento HCP and, um, we will be having additional environmental analysis done to address the comments that were provided earlier. And with that, I will now try and, uh, address, I, I think uh, there were a few commissioner questions, um, one with regard to the name. Generally, you have a specific plan that has a overall name and then as the subdivisions come in, they will have their own distinct names and as uh, Todd indicated, uh, there's generally very little confusion on where, um, uh, emergency vehicles are going because they are also, um, locate them through either the, the phone or through the cell phone. With regard to the affordable housing, uh, ordinance, uh, if the board adopts a ordinance that requires land dedication and fee, we will do that. We will be subject to whatever ordinance is, uh, adopted when the maps are coming through. Um, and that's the same with the infill fee as I addressed earlier. Um, as far as the, um, credits, there was a, some language change that we made and I think we're in um, agreement with the county at this point, uh, with county staff at this point. Um, with that, I, next slide, I think is questions. Be happy to take it.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. I'm gonna open it up to commissioner questions this evening.
So this is Cara, um, and I'd like to also state for the record that I, um, met with the applicant, the applicant team. And that's kind of what my question, um, is related to. We, we talked about um, sort of the changing nature of commercial and office zones. And I thought it was really interesting worth bringing up um, tonight for the record, some of your thoughts on, um, how to adopt that space, um, for changing needs of the community and then also just, uh, the environment which we currently live and probably will for quite some time with the, um, COVID pandemic. And that's, um, your thoughts on, uh, office space and, and what else could possibly, um, um, be cited there?
And, uh, Commissioner, just clarification here, are you talking along both the office and the, the general commercial or just the general?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, one of the, um, concepts that Angelo has put forward is a hospital use along Jackson Highway and that would be allowed with the use permit in the office zone, um. And certainly out in this area with the populations that they're growing, this would be a ideal location for medical services. And general commercial, uh, there, you can have a mix of many uses, including housing and the, and those designations, um, and, uh, we're seeing some retail demand come back as, uh, The. COVID is settling out, but that would be. Uses that would come a little bit later because usually you have to get rooftops out there. Obviously, there's a need. For. Grocery store out in this direction. You have Mather Independence right north of this large. Community with no grocery store. And so this could easily serve that as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks. I I thought, you know, you don't necessarily think of being zoned for. Office as being applicable to. Medical services as well, though, since and I thought that was really interesting considering Sacramento is. Sort of a healthcare hub. And there's just such a changing dynamic of our workplace these days. I I was really encouraged to hear that. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Other commissioners with questions for the applicant this evening?
Hi, this is Commissioner Borha. The the applicant mentioned, and also I would like to preface that. I did meet with the applicant team as well as some stakeholders who have sent over comments regarding this project. The applicant mentioned earlier that they are. Open to not postponing, but to also allow for the environmental documents completion for circulation. Next, next month or 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 in two months in in order for us to to have a vote, is that still? I guess that's my question for about the applicant and to the county. Is that something that? We have explored as a feasibility or as an option? So that commissioners could at least have a an EIR that would be circulated?
So this Jim Wiley, you do have an EIR that's been circulated. What would? What generally occurs is. The planning commission recommends that the. Staff finalize that EIR and bring it forward to the. And respond to all the. Comments and bring that forward to the. Board that we've. And so that's the normal process. We all we wanted to indicate is we did have additional analysis going on and that would come out in the final. EIR. At the time of the board and public is then able to address. Any concerns that come out at the with the final EIR at the board. Todd, you may want to address that as well.
Yeah, I I was just going to add that. Very rare for the planning commission to have a final EIR, including all the responses to comments in front of them. For a project that goes on to the Board of Supervisors as the final hearing body. I can think of maybe. Maybe one project in. The twenty years I've worked here. It's it's like I said, very rare. Typically, the mission's direction is to staff prepare the final EIR, including responses to comments. And then that is finalized and included and published before. A minimum of ten days before the Board of Supervisors. Hearing on the project, which has not been set yet.
I think, thank you for the response. My next question. Is related to the the comments on. I guess there were some comments from the from some of the stakeholders about. Not necessarily environmental concerns, but how this. Project would would also interact with with safety and perhaps any of the widening. On on Highway sixteen. Can the applicant and or that the county staff kind of just talk a little bit about that and. See if we've been able to address both the the safety and also the questions made by, I want to say, the the Highway Patrol back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty?
Sure, I can speak to. A little bit to the transportation mitigation strategy and I I want to say, I think I see Matt Darrow with the Department of Transportation on the on the meeting as well and. So at a real high level, the the transportation improvements would occur. That would be triggered and identified and triggered for construction as subsequent. Entitlements come forward. Whether it's Jackson Road specifically or any of the other roads in the in the community area. I believe DOT would be coordinating with Caltrans. Because Caltrans, State Route sixteen, Jackson Road is currently a Caltrans facility. And they would work to ensure that there's safety for all users of the roadway network during. Construction of improvements that could include. For example, rerouting or detours or. Things of that nature during the construction period. The the projects or the transportation mitigation strategy also includes installation of facilities to address some of the rural roadways. In this part of the county. Bringing some of those roadways up to the current standards. Ensuring that there's adequate shoulders, things like that. That would help improve safety for the traveling public. And that if you can. If you have anything to add, feel free to go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just do it because you called me out, but but yeah, I'm here listening and I think everything Todd said was hundred percent accurate. The only other thing I would add and only because I'm I'm not privy to the comment that that we're addressing or being asked about. I do know that Caltrans also. Has a project out there right now for Eagles Nest and State Route sixteen where they're going to address some existing safety issues in their mind. So. That's the only thing I wanted to add. Everything Todd said was a hundred percent accurate. And and the commissioners may may remember that we did a workshop on the. Dynamic implementation tool and mitigation strategy and Todd sort of addressed that. That's how we will identify when and where. Transportation projects will need to occur. All I got.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Wong or Tatishi, do you have any questions for the applicant this evening?
Not at this time. I I think most everyone's asked questions that I was curious about. I will disclose that I did meet with the applicant.
I also met with the applicant and I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Perfect. Well, I think my questions were all answered when during the. Applicant's response at the end of their presentation. I did meet with the applicant also. I just wanted to disclose that. With that, I think we're going to be wrapping up with the time for applicant questions and we will move on to open the public comment.
And there are no public comments at this time.
Okay, we have no public comments. We're going to go ahead and close the public comment period. And we will move on to commissioner deliberation or a motion.
This is Commissioner Tatishi. I would move staff recommendation.
This is Commissioner Rathel. I'll second staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And for the roll call vote, Commissioners Borha.
Yes.
Martenson?
Yes.
Tatishi?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And Rathel?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, congratulations. Thank you. That concludes item number four this evening. We'll move on to the planning director's report.
This is Leanne Moffett, the county planning director, checking that you can hear me all right.
Yes, Leanne.
Thank you. So just a couple items to keep you. Aware of what's headed to the board, some things that you have seen in the past. So OE three, the operating engineers is at the board tomorrow. We also brought forward to you a the workshop on the housing trust fund, so that is at the board on Wednesday. And then finally, next week. We are taking a package of county code amendments. On recent state legislation called SB nine. Forward to the board. That item is only a county code amendment package, so it doesn't come in front of the planning commission. But we wanted to verbally let you know about that. And it does have to do with making sure that we are compliant with state law by January first. Around allowing administrative. Two lot lot splits or two homes on one lot. And it could be that the board may want zoning code amendments that would come back through the planning commission. So that's one of the questions we'll be asking the board. And then my fourth item is to let you know that we may need to come back to the planning commission on an expedited basis. And to deal with some changes, the housing element to address comments by state HCD. So stay tuned for more on that and we will appreciate your attention to this expedited matter when and if we get it back in front of the planning commission. So that's our my report for tonight.
Thanks, Leanne. We'll move on to item number six.
So this is Chris Boholi, principal planner. Just wanted to mention under this miscellaneous scheduling items that. In follow-up to Chair Rathel's request at the last meeting. Regarding a joint pub or joint hearing of the official planning bodies. Of the county, I did follow up with him this afternoon and discussed it. We are going to be working together to. Try to. Find a date. And a. Develop a scope of the hearing likely to happen sometime early twenty twenty-two. So wanted to mention that to the group as well as letting you know that the December thirteenth. Planning Commission meeting will be canceled. So the next. Next meeting will occur in January. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Chris. And item number seven.
And there are no further public comments.
All right, with that, we're going to adjourn at seven fifty-four PM. Thank you all for your participation this evening and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.